All rise for a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, can we have a roll call attendance, please?
Yes.
Here.
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 Here. Okay. All the board members have received the minutes from the secretary for the October 3rd meeting. If there's no discussion regarding the minutes, entertain a motion to approve is written. No move.
I'll second it.
Okay. Made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, the motion carries. Okay. So our first item on the agenda this evening is an adjourned public hearing for Kimmel Subdivision. Entertain a motion to open the adjourned public hearing. So move. Okay. Motion seconded by? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So at the request of the applicant, they've asked to be adjourned to November 7th. Prior to the adjournment, is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak upon this application? All right. Seeing that there's none, at this time, entertain a motion to adjourn to November 7th. No move.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Our second adjourned public hearing this evening is for the Bittero subdivision. Entertain a motion to open the Bittero subdivision. No move. All right. Seconded by?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, this one at the request of the applicant, they're asking to be adjourned to the November 21st meeting. But prior to adjourning it, is there anybody here from the public this evening that wishes to speak on behalf of the Bittero subdivision? Okay. Seeing that there's none, we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing to November 21st.
I'll move that. Second.
Motion's made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. That brings us down to public, yes, public hearing for Fun Max Adventure Park LLC. Yeah, sorry. Motion to open the public hearing.
No move.
Motion's made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Actually, that's good. Thank you. I'm Steve Whalen, Whalen Architecture. I'm also joined tonight by Hee Lin. He's the owner of Fun Max at 1357 Route 9. Since our last presentation, we revised, one of the major comments was about the sign. We had two individual signs on the building, we're now combining that into one. The total square footage for that, we're keeping it under 100 square feet. And I think one of the other comments was about the water usage at the building. The building's been vacant since 2018, so we were able to track back to, I believe, 2014, which I resubmitted, or revised drawings to the board.
Okay.
And those are, I think, were the only two major comments.
All right. Yeah, actually, that was the, okay. See, the comments that you had, all right. So with that, you got the most recent letters from both the planner and the engineer? Actually, sorry, hold on, it wasn't on this one. Let me back up here a second.
A letter from, actually, here. You received today from Harasty and Hanover?
Yes.
And the only comment on that one was about the outdoor public address system, which we're not going to have.
So on the record, you're saying there'd be no outdoor?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So you basically satisfied all your comments? Okay. Okay. Engineering, I don't believe there was any open-ended issues with this?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right. Does anybody on the board have any questions regarding this project? So we got the new plans addressed. They've addressed all the open-ended issues here at this point? All look good?
Happy to see it.
Okay. So basically, we had to have a, had to open the public hearing for, because of the special use permit.
Okay.
So at this time, I'm just going to ask the public, is there anyone here this evening that's here that has any comments or concerns regarding the Fun Max Adventure Park, which is being proposed to go in to the Alpine Plaza? Okay. Seeing that there's none, what's the board's pleasure with this application?
It's fine.
Okay. So we'll have the, make a, somebody want to make a motion to authorize the planner to draft a resolution of approval?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. So at this point, I mean, really, nobody has any questions. I guess it's pretty straightforward at this point. We'll go ahead and we'll have the planner draft a resolution and it'll be put on the agenda for one of the future meetings to vote on for approval.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. You're all set.
Thanks.
All right.
Here we go. Canine Clippers.
Okay. So our next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding Canine Clippers Incorporated Dog grooming. The applicant?
Hello.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would, just state your name for, an address for the record?
Yeah. My name is Annie Albalaker, and I'm at 102 Chelsea Road.
Okay. Okay. So you submitted application here, this is for a home occupation?
Yes.
And you're proposing to, I guess, run a dog grooming business through your home?
Yes. I currently have one now. I've had a salon for 25 years, and I'm now looking to downsize and work from home.
Okay.
Do a lot less.
Okay. So, all right. So a couple of things that come up earlier in the discussions this evening, one of which is the Health Department?
Yes.
This was, apparently, this was circulated to different agencies. Did the Health Department, did you contact the Health Department?
They, I did, but we didn't get in touch with each other. We haven't spoke yet.
All right. So they're going to, they want, obviously, to speak to you because they're going to have some concerns regarding, obviously, because your, you know, your water is produced, you know, from a well, and also you have a septic system, you know, to discharge the water.
Okay.
So we're going to, the board's probably going to be looking to get some type of letter from the Health Department just stating that if everything that's there is okay, or, you know, they're going to require some additional, you know, additional work to be done to your, you know, to your septic system.
Why?
Because if you're, if there's an increase in the amount of water that you're discharging, there may be a requirement to increase your septic system.
I mean, I'm really just looking to be doing, you know, two or three dogs a day.
No, I understand what you're...
And small ones.
Yeah.
Did you plan on putting, like, the hair traps in for wherever you're washing the dogs?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. They need a plumbing permit for that?
Yes.
All right. So that would be, at the end of the day, that would be, the condition of the approval would be that you would have to get, you know, take out plumbing permit with the, you know, through the Building Department for the installation of a hair trap, you know, wherever you're going to be doing this, this work.
And that is something that I need. I definitely need a hair trap.
Yeah, usually, all the hair salons also need them, just, you know, substrate septic system, basically.
Yeah, especially with a septic.
You'll be very happy, you're down the road to do it.
I have one now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're usually required.
Or at least, yeah, there'd have to be a confirmation that that at least is in place.
Okay.
So that brings us to another, so there's another issue that we have to do as a board. Anybody that comes to us with a, you know, home occupation, or basically it's a special permit, we have to schedule a public hearing. So notifies, you know, the neighbors, you know, of what you're doing, and then if they have any concern, you know, they can come to that public hearing and express their concerns, if there even are any concerns. But it's something that we have to do just to stay consistent with these projects as they've come, you know, come across.
Okay.
So that would be the one thing we need to do, is to set a date for a public hearing at this point. That would be, I guess, when would?
Huh?
The 21st of November?
Yeah.
So we'll leave that up to you, if the 21st works for you.
If that is the soonest?
We can go ahead and schedule...
Is that the earliest?
The what?
Is that the soonest?
Yeah. Yeah, but you have to, they have to do the mailings, though.
We have an extra week this month.
Hmm?
We have an extra week this month.
Yeah, that's three weeks from now, basically.
Oh, okay. That's right. I forgot. So we could, I mean, if you want to do the 7th, we could do the 7th.
Please.
Just have to get in touch with the secretary to, because you'll have to provide, you know, mailings to the neighbors, you know, of what's going on. She'll give you the information that you need to, or at least help you with that information that needs to be sent out.
Okay.
Okay? So that, so entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for Canine Clippers for November 7th. All right. Motion's made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So motion carries. Okay. So in the interim, though, you're going to need to reach out to the Health Department?
I will. And I'm sure that we're going to speak tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
One question. You currently have a dog grooming?
I do, yes.
And where is?
It's in Fishville.
Is it municipal water?
Yes.
What might be helpful for the Health Department?
Yeah.
Is if you could get a, you know, the totals from your water bill?
Okay.
And do, basically, figure out how much water you use per dog?
A branch, I forgot. Okay.
So, you know, if you could make an estimate of how much water you use per dog?
Sure.
That might be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, do you have, do any other board members have any questions?
You might already have what you need with your current system.
Okay.
So I wouldn't be, you know, don't worry about it.
Okay.
If you call Dutchess County Health and just say, "Have a rep come out," they'll be happy to come out. Your system might have exactly what you need for the use that you want.
Okay.
So, yeah, I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
Have them come out and then draw up, you know, a letter for you, and then you'll be fine.
Does the Board of Health need to come to my property?
I mean, unless you know the type of system you have.
Yeah, I'd reach out to them and talk to them and see what their specific needs are.
Okay.
All right. Before you go, yeah, just touch base with them.
Okay.
And like I said, at the end of the day, we'll, you know, we'll need something one way or the other.
Okay. So I'll speak with them, and then I will then do the plumbing permit?
That comes at the...
Yeah, at the end, after, that's afterwards. And then that'll be, that'll be, once we approve this, that'll be part of the, you know, that'll be also within the resolution.
Okay.
That, you know, the conditions that you have to meet in order to do, you know, in order to operate the business at that location.
Okay.
All right. Does, any of the staff have any other questions? No? Okay.
And I come and see you?
I'll come back to you.
Tonight?
Yes.
Oh, you will? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Have a good night.
So, yeah, so I guess we'll get the thing moving. We'll see you again on the 7th of November for a public hearing. Hopefully, in between now and then, you can get the, these couple of issues, you know, resolved, you know, with the Health Department, and then we can move forward from there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. You're welcome. Have a good evening.
I'm free to go?
What?
You are free to go.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You are free to go.
Yes.
Not, not...
Yeah. As much as I wanted to say.
All right. So that one's good. Okay. So our next item on the agenda this evening is a site plan special use permit for Children's Enrichment Project LLC.
What's going on? Been a while.
Yeah, has been.
Has been. Brian Stokos, Dan Stokos Engineering, we're here tonight for a change of use for an existing site, an existing building on it. The site's a full over an acre, acre, almost an acre and a half in size. The project, the building used to serve as a furniture store, that was open to the public. And with, with the buildings that it has on site, it has a detached garage. I believe it also has a CO for caretaker's apartment for the, for the people who used to operate the furniture store business. That's where they resided. What the applicant's done, they've gone ahead and purchased a property, and they want to change the use to a private club that they would have for their members on site, not open to the public, so it's just enriching children activities that they have. The applicant can speak more about the actual school itself, but as far as from an engineering standpoint, the changes that we're proposing on the site plan are relatively minor. There have, we're going to place like a landscaping berm in the front, we'll elevate it, let's say, three feet off the ground, about six and a half feet wide, put some plantings on there just to provide a little bit of screening for the building. Obviously, set that far enough that it wouldn't impact any site distances from the existing entrance. Split rail fence along the side, looking, let's say, north, split rail fence around, so the fence would incorporate basically the whole yard. There's a fence at the back, split rail on the side, and we just kind of tie that one end in so it'd be fully fenced. The entrance to remain the same, it's a gravel surface out there, so we propose to remain that the same, just to improve it slightly if there's any dips or anything like that. In speaking to the applicant, they assumed 11 cars, that's kind of their turnaround and their drive for volume to the site, so we didn't really have specific parking calculations to go by, other than what the applicant anticipates. Again, this is kind of like a members-only club, not open to the public, so the way they control the traffic volume there is through their membership. Other than that, there's no other real site improvements. Going to take down the sign, get the split rail fence, the earth berm. There is an existing septic on site. At the time of submission, we were in a rush to kind of get this information to the board and start the process. We didn't have any septic information on file, so we've did a FOIL, a request to the Health Department to try to see if we can back into what the formal, former site used to have, if they had any, anything on file with the Health Department. So we anticipate having that information in for, you know, obviously, the next submission, but we'll provide it when we have more information on. So lighting remains the same, we're not adding or taking away any lighting, whatever, it remains the same. The apartment would stay, because it doesn't leave a valid CO on it, specific to the use. I don't know if the applicant is here tonight, I don't know if she wants to go into any kind of discussions about the school, but that's basically it, not too many site changes.
Okay. I mean, so obviously, there's a change in the use of the property at its previous approval. So, you know, obviously, it was a retail use prior, and now, I said, I'm not, you know, the educational use, or, you know, it sounds like if it's a club, I mean, is it more of an assembly use? You know, that's, yeah, yeah, it's like, kind of, tough, so...
Detail, yeah.
Yeah. The parking, you know, because then that affects, you know, the assembly use would definitely affect the parking calculations.
Right.
Which I believe, you know, the planner had, you know, asked a little more detail regarding, regarding the parking regulations, how they're going to meet those. Also, just to, with the, say, handicap parking that you're proposing, how are they going to provide access to the building?
There'd have to be some, to meet ADA typical requirements, that section, you know, have to be hardened so it can be maintained, so obviously, we'd add detail for that, but any kind of ramps to give them to the first owner.
Okay. All right. Any other board members have any questions?
Yeah. If you have no information on the septic, you might be starting from scratch, I hope you know that.
I know.
It depends on what the Health Department says.
Yeah, it would, I mean, there's, there are avenues that we can tackle this, I mean, this obviously did support an apartment, it supported a commercial use, so...
Okay.
I'm assuming that the, although it was quite a long time ago, there's probably something on file with the Health Department. Typically, if there's not, there's avenues that we can go through to figure out what's in the ground. Usually, we call it a hearing sanitation or another septic call, or they'll pump the tank, and they'll give us a volume of the tank, and then sometimes they can snake the system.
Yeah.
And they can kind of get a feel for what's in there.
I'm familiar. Do you think it'll be viable, given that there's no record of it?
Yeah, I do. I think, I think there's enough room in the backyard area to, if there needs to be a couple of extralaterals put in, I mean, you can use the infiltrators now, you get a pretty decent credit with those.
Yeah, sure.
So there's, there's things we can do, but...
Okay. We'll definitely need documentation going forward from Dutchess County Health.
Yep.
As soon as you can. I have some findings. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any?
Just some detail on what exactly it is.
Yeah, we just want to know what it is.
Yeah.
Is it a school?
We'll get, we'll get the applicant to give us a little more detail. Yeah, if you have the owners, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, the...
Do you have a question? Hi, good evening. I'm a member of the...
Could you state your name and, state your name and address for the record?
My address?
Yeah.
Brian Waltermeyer. I live in Garrison, New York.
Okay.
I run a insurance company, I'm the CEO of an insurance company, I have an IT company. I'm a member of this PMA, there seems to be a lot of confusion around what it is. It's not a school, it's a private membership organization, association for childhood enrichment. So it's mostly nature-based activities for younger kids and our families, in our small group.
Is it like, is it basically like a daycare?
No, it's a private membership association, so it's not any type of formal education, daycare, anything like that. It's a, it's a formalized group for people with like minds who want to, kind of like a faith-based organization, or the Boy Scouts, or the DNC, the RNC, golf club, the country clubs, those are all PMAs.
Okay.
Is it, is there age-based or gender targeted, or anything like that?
How many members are there?
Luckily, there's eight. Seven or eight?
Okay. So it's a smaller organization. Okay.
Can I jump in? From my perspective, what I'm most curious about is the valet parking system that was proposed, and the parking calculations, which, I mean, it makes sense, it, there isn't really anything in the schedule of use for off-street parking that applies to this use necessarily, which gives the planning board authority to decide how many parking spaces it needs.
Okay.
And in order to do that, we just need to get a better idea of, you know, the most number of cars that would be arriving, staying on the property for any length of time, right? What your, what your busiest hours are going to be, how many cars you assume would need to be parked here, right? Because...
Will it need to be bigger, was there overflow or congestion?
Yeah, yeah. We don't want to get a situation where you've got more cars arriving at the site than there is space to house, and also, there's the ADA space, which could work as proposed, but we would want to get turning radii on it just to make sure that it could get out from behind those cars if this parking scheme is the one you want to move forward with.
Okay.
And that could come in the form of a narrative, that could come in the form of, you know, the total number of cars. It can be something we discuss now, it can be part of the next submission.
Okay.
But, you know, it's, it's possible you need fewer parking spaces than are shown, it's possible that you need more. We'll also need to factor in the fact that there is a residence on, on the property.
Yeah.
So it would be, you know, the total number of spaces that the PMA would need, and then add on to that...
The residence.
The residence spaces.
Is there some overflow that has to be adjusted for as well, like?
Not necessarily. I mean, because it's not on the schedule of uses for off-street parking?
Yeah.
We can work with you based on your programmatic, you know, needs, as to how many spaces this PMA would need.
Okay.
So that's, that's the parking situation, right? Where we were just a little confused about the valet parking, how that would work, how that would operate, particularly with residents, right?
Right.
It could work, assuming that a member of the organization is the person in the apartment. That's not inherently true, it's probably how you would like to move forward, but that's not, you know...
Yeah. You're trying to calculate the total flow in and out.
Make sure that everybody can get in and out of the parking lot safely. So it's the parking question.
Communicate that.
Yeah. And that's, I think that's the big question, at least from my end, is how are we going to make this, the existing parking lot work for your needs?
Okay. Are there any employees?
No. I'm a resident, so I represent the LLC, the company. Just so you're aware, my name is...
The company?
The LLC.
Just state your name.
Laura Tabatsnick. Laura Tabatsnick.
And your address.
I'm also in Garrison, New York. Regard, just sorry, regarding the parking, the, it wouldn't be separate residence, they, whoever stays in the cottage will also be members, to answer your question.
Okay.
It would be helpful to understand from your side, currently, how many parking spaces you'd feel comfortable with.
Well, it, it depends on your programmatic needs, right? So I don't know how many parents are arriving at any given time to drop off kids, I don't know how many people are...
I mean, we have eight families, it's so small.
Yeah.
You know, we're not looking, it's, we're coming from... You know, we're not looking, it's, we're coming from.
You probably need fewer than 11 cars, but.
Yeah, we said the max, didn't we, right?
Yes, well, we assume the worst-case scenario, so if you have eight families, usually it comes with one car, but it's.
Sometimes two people come.
Yeah, usually two for each resident, right?
Yeah.
Each residence?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't you need an additional, like, two for each residence?
For the apartment.
For the residential building, so you'd still need four more for that. So if you have eight.
We're also a member too, so it's, it's kind of.
There would also be members of the, okay. So what you, all right, so then.
Your eight spaces plus an ADA, and you have two left over, so, you know, I think we're good, I don't think we're heavy on the parking, but I think we're out.
As long as you feel comfortable, I mean, I think we would, if we were to move forward with the assumption that whoever's living in the caretaker's residence is also a member of the club, then we would put that in the resolution and on the plans, because if that ever changes for whatever reason, and you choose to lease it out, the parking scheme no longer works.
Yep.
So as long as you're comfortable with that, sort of being baked into all of the plans, if that's okay with everybody else.
So that wouldn't be like a permanent residence, the caretaker cottage that's in the back, that would be just like an overnight thing or?
It would be, it would be one of the members residing.
Yeah, just your members for a weekend here and there, or whatnot, or whatever.
Or permanent if a resident, I mean, a member chooses to live there.
Might be a member that just lives there on a regular basis.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that, and if it changes, we could come back to you.
Yeah, you would just need to come back for an amended site plan, and we would revise how the parking would work, but.
That wouldn't be like a rental situation, though, right?
We would have to put it in the resolution and on the site plan that it's to be, it's to be rented to an active member of your PMA.
Yep.
But would be occupied by, doesn't necessarily have to be a true rental.
That's true.
Yeah, it just has to be, right, but it's gonna be, it'll be put down as occupied by.
But that way, the board could then take into account for determining how many parking spaces the PMA needs on a daily basis.
Because those parking spaces, then again, would be also used for the, you know, for the other building.
Exactly.
And activities within that building.
And then that gives you a little bit more leeway in terms of determining how many parking spaces the site needs.
Are both of those buildings tied into the same septic system?
That's a good question.
I believe they are, and that's part of our FOIL research.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, yeah, so obviously you have that whole, you know, these thoughts, they hammer that out with the Health Department. So the one other, so there was another, there was a letter, or actually, it was a referral from Dutchess County Planning. They had a couple of comments on here regarding site distance, you know, which is possibly gonna be reduced by the berm. That, we're probably gonna require some type of a letter, because that is a state road, to get a letter from New York State DOT stating that the berm is not gonna, that they're fine with that, that it's not gonna create an obstruction, because, you know, want to worry about one of your members pulling out, not being able to see far enough down, and creating an accident at that intersection of the driveway.
Yeah, so we, because what they do is put the site distance triangles on there, what we'll do is we'll place that on the next plan, show the berm out, and I think we're okay, and we'll like, put the triangles on there and like, but rather we'll show that.
Okay, yeah. All right, but as long as, I mean, obviously the county's brought it to our attention, you know, we have to get it addressed, and again, it's not a, you know, it's not a town road, it's a, you know, it's a state highway, so.
Sure.
We're gonna ask for something from the state just to make sure that they're okay with it.
So I wanted to answer your question, there's no employees, because we're in the private domain, there's, yeah, there's no employees.
No, I got that.
Everyone's a member.
My only other thought, and this didn't make it onto my comment memo, and I also don't know that it'd be an issue, but just for you guys, I took a look at the detail for your split rail fence going around the property, you may need to add chicken wire or something, and make sure chickens don't get out from underneath it, but that's just something that popped in my head while I was looking at stuff.
That's great, thank you.
Intended use for the barn?
None, it doesn't feel safe to us right now, so we're gonna wait. We'd probably come back at some point in the future.
So for current purposes, it's only gonna be used for storage?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And the chicken coop behind the barn, is that just a shed for storage, is that still being used as a chicken coop? I was curious about that.
There's no chickens at the moment, that's part of what we came to you for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not being used as anything.
Are you gonna use the five new ones and the existing chicken coop?
So I don't understand the question.
So there's, there's an existing chicken coop shown behind the barn, and then there's also five new proposed chicken coops. I was just curious if that chicken coop behind the barn has chickens, if it's just storage, is it just legacy?
I think it's just legacy.
Okay. It doesn't matter either way, I was just curious.
Is there a pool or something back there, right behind the barn?
A pool?
I was going to ask, is the pool still there?
I think it's.
It is gone? Yeah, because there was something back there.
Yeah, you can just level it up.
Is there? Okay.
Yeah, the site plan appears to have been prepared from an adult survey prepared by, let's see, Dick Barger, but that survey was dated 2003, so the survey is 20 years old, that could be source of confusion. I'd recommend that, you know, just maybe it's up.
Do they need an updated survey for the fence going up?
Sure.
Because it's not a residential.
It's really old, and it's someone else's survey, so it should be representative of what's there now, I mean, this is showing the pool.
I think at a minimum.
That the chicken coop isn't there or not being used, maybe something more current.
Yeah, I think at a minimum, the survey should at least be validated or redlined as to what still is or isn't there. The fence that they're showing appears to be, you know, quite a bit off of that northeast property line, except for where it connects to the fence along the back.
The old fence in the back you're talking about?
Yeah, the old one along the back there.
We'll build for a lot of the building.
Just maybe, yeah, add the property adjoinders, I don't see that on.
Okay.
I just have a question regarding a place of public assembly. You know, a typical health club is, you know, usually a place of public assembly, so, you know, I think if you use the barn, you know, we require, New York State requires an operating permit for any place of public assembly that can fit more than 50 people. I don't know for the house what it would be, and then, you know, the question is, do you go up and down? So I'm not sure here whether or not this qualifies as, you know, a place of public assembly, but, you know, that's one of the things that I think you should address, because assembly occupancies for building permits and buyer codes are treated differently, so that's something you should take a look at, make a determination one way or another as to whether or not it constitutes a place of public assembly.
Also, they should have a dumpster there, and show a dumpster enclosure, because a garbage can is obviously not gonna cut it, right?
Showing.
Or do they show, do they show a dumpster enclosure there?
I just, like, what we anticipate is two of the wheel carts.
They're right here. Two, right.
Yeah, they've got.
It's like regular wheel carting.
We're ready for the world, just wheeling out.
The 95 gallons.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, so with, with what the attorney just brought up, I mean, that's, you know, what's the potential overall for this? Because, I mean, obviously today, there's only eight members. Is there anticipated growth that, you know, five years down the road, that there's gonna be, you know, 50, 60 members?
We don't want it to be that big.
Don't be, okay.
I mean, I think, you know, as far as the building goes, it's gonna be based on the, you know, the floor, you know, the floor.
Right.
Yeah, there's some responsibility.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's not.
Yeah.
I mean, it's an existing old house, so.
Right, right, yeah.
You know, your limitation, I mean, the only time you'd get into, you know, a large assembly space is if you would use the barn.
Right, if you use the barn itself. Are they providing meals there too, or?
No.
You know, like, you know, no?
But we would come back to if we wanted to use the barn, it's, it's not even.
Yeah, I think of our structure, we can, they're not enclosed or anything like that, basically just wanted to get on site, get active, you know, by actually, it prevents itself down the road, and back to the, for health, it's, it's that kind of stuff.
What kind of operating hours?
During the day, like, nine to four, three, four.
Okay, so pretty much daylight-type hours?
Daylight, yeah.
Is there any lighting changes gonna go on there, like, for parking and whatnot?
Is it earlier that you weren't proposing to change any of the existing lighting, right?
So there is some existing lighting, you know, on the corners of the bars, on the house, but there wasn't any proposed changes to do with it, but.
Does any of that have to conform, like, to our new lighting standards now? Because it's not residential use or any, or anything?
They're mending.
Now they changed hands, I mean, no upward lighting, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
So, do we need a lighting plan?
Or at least to know where the lights are?
Yeah, I mean.
And to the degree to which it's being lit, right? Because the exterior of the site is being lit when, as it was, when it was a commercial site, and it is all existing lighting.
Yeah, but now that it's changing use.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be different, so it needs to conform to our five-foot candle rule, all that stuff, no upward lighting.
Yeah.
So they'll probably have to change the lightings there, to stay.
Or bring it down.
Or bring it down.
Or bring it down, yeah. So would we need a lighting plan coming forward?
They should show, on the next submission, you should show where those lights are, and if any of the lights are proposed to be removed.
Because basically, we're not gonna exceed five-foot candles in an area like that now, right?
Yeah, yeah, especially in the hamlet next to you.
Yeah, and no upward lighting, and, yeah.
Are you putting a kitchen in the main building? I don't believe there was one there a couple of years ago.
There was one in the main building upstairs, Matthew took it out, and I think we'd like to have something small for our members.
No, I was in the building, oh, not that long ago, I know there was no kitchen, that's why I'm asking. One of the questions was, would you be doing, like, lunch?
No. I mean, the members would bring their own, or they could, yeah.
Yeah, the break room.
Not, like, they cater things, is that what you mean?
So nobody's gonna live in the main house?
You need a building permit for any connections or redoing outlets to today's code.
Okay, yeah, at this stage, we're not asking for a kitchen.
What do they have for bathrooms in there?
Really didn't, I just, I know there was no kitchen, I was gonna go through for bathrooms. I mean, there have probably been, there've been other businesses, do you have a bathroom in the main house?
Mm-hmm, there are two, three.
How many?
I'm just trying to remember, one, two, or three, at least two. Yeah, there are two.
Brian, can you do a simple floor plan for the big building, just since it's gonna be commercial, just so we have something to go by?
Just to show what they're using the locations for, right? All right.
I mean, everything you talked about tonight, I think we can, every submission department, just kind of actually, I think, we're working on, hoping that something, hopefully, those considerations. DOT getting an official letter from them, maybe, a little bit of time, but, I think we should, it's like, this is, I don't know, maybe at this stage, we could schedule a public hearing, and see what's the situation.
I think we should get the information.
If you get the DOT and Health Department information to us, it would be, it'd be a good way to start.
Operating hours listed.
For us.
Yeah, the operating hours, they'll put, well, they have to write up a whole detail that they're doing with the operating hours. Yeah, as per, right, include those in there, you know, all the details. I mean, how, I'm sorry. Does it need to conform with ADA? Yeah, it does. Well, yeah, the site does, I mean, that's what we're looking at, the site itself, and that's, I brought that up about the parking.
The parking.
The access to the building. Yeah, if they're gonna modify the building, you know, they have to.
They have to think more about it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the bathroom would have to be accessible, right?
Right.
If there was one.
It's a private membership.
Yeah.
Well, it's private, if they're calling it a private membership, does that fall under public?
Well, you can't describe it, right?
Yeah, it's all, it's all well and good, it's all well and good up until we have one member that doesn't, that is handicapped.
Yeah, it's gotta be handicapped.
All they do is they make the phone call to the, you know, New York, it's the Attorney General's office, so.
I mean, there's different requirements for existing buildings.
Yeah, yeah, and that would be, I mean, as long as the site is, and they have the access from the parking space to the building, when they come in for the permits to do whatever work they're gonna do on a building, it'd be up to the building department to decide, you know, if it's gonna be required based upon the principal use. They'd have to look at the change, you know, you know, obviously, change in occupancy or change in use, you know, to the building, and whether or not those requirements would kick in.
Is there any blacktop proposed in that parking lot?
See, he's gonna provide information on that for the next submission.
It'll be this, the handicap stop.
Just to.
What about the entranceway? What is that, 10 feet there? Supposed to have 10 feet on the entrance?
Well, at least for the parking area, the specific requirements for the parking area, then in a path of travel to the building, it has to be, you know, laid out for the, you know, ADA accessibility, yeah, so they'll put that on, they'll let that on for the next session.
Well, it's not pay access.
Anybody have any other questions?
I don't think now, not till we see the detail and everything.
All right. How long you think it would take before you can get that put together?
When's our next submission due? Is that on Thursday?
It's today.
Yeah, today, so I mean, it really wouldn't be.
Twenty first.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, I mean.
It'd be way back.
You know, the 21st? It'd be the 21st.
Well, maybe we give it a little time, I mean, with the 20, I mean, the 21st might probably be the best bet.
Yeah, because they won't hear back from, what do you call it, DOT?
You get, at least you have a little feedback, Board of Health, yeah, just in case, because, I mean, everything, the way things have been going lately, yeah.
I'd rather, I'd rather have the board, also, we have a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, at the earliest, I would say is if we do the 21st. Agreed, you guys okay to do that? Yeah. It gives you.
Because we need Board of Health and DOT.
Yeah, it gives you a little time too, because, you know, just the way things are going, I mean, we had those other adjourned ones that, you know, I read off earlier, both of them, you know, you know, they couldn't get everything they needed together, and one of those projects is very minimal information we're looking for, and, you know, they asked to be pushed back again, so, yeah, so if, so if you want to do the public hearing, I